Uh, we'd like to ask. Yes, we'll ask Mr. McConaughey to lead us in prayer, please.
Oh Father, we thank you for this opportunity, Lord. As we assemble ourselves together, we ask today, Lord Jesus, that thou may bless our mayor, bless the council member, let them make wise decisions. And Father, let us be those participants of those decisions, Lord, that we may lead our city to a higher claim indeed. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. McConaughey. So now have our meeting minutes, city council members. You had an opportunity to review your meeting minutes. Are there any questions? About the minute.
Uh, we make motion to approve the minutes, our end.
What's our move?
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented from the previous meeting. Is there any discussion? If not, we're moving to a vote. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the chair, aye is ahead. Now we're on the unfinished business. We're on the item number one. Renovation of City Hall and City Hall Kitchen and Bathroom. We're gonna turn it over to Ms. Strickland. She offered her own give a report for the Chamber of Commerce as well.
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, and Council. Uh, update on the City Hall Kitchen and Bathroom renovation. We had to get the building plans for said areas. Now we are waiting on pricing from the contractor. Our extension has been approved by the Director of Adeka, Mr. Boswell, for completion of project until February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. On behalf of the Mayor, we would like to thank all the businesses and churches, all of the parents and children that participated in our safe trumpet treat for Halloween on October thirtieth. We passed our candy to over a hundred and fifty children. It was indeed a success. Tomorrow is to close the farmer's market season. On behalf of the Mayor, we would like to thank our farmers, our vendors, our sanitation department, and you for making this challenging season a success. Come out tomorrow, use your vouchers. Um, the fifteenth of November is the last day to use your vouchers. As you all drive around town, you will see that decoration for Christmas has begun. Um, there's more to come. We got pole lights going up, Christmas banners. Uh, we got Christmas trees that need to be decorated, and also we got to do downtown Broad Street. We got a few more sundry items underway to have us ready for our holly, jolly Christmas. Dallasville Parade and the tree lighting is Monday, December sixth at five P. M. on Third Avenue. Following the parade, there will be a tree lighting. So follow Santa on down to the pavilion for pictures, music, and hot cocoa. If you want to have your flow in the parade, um, you can register online, or you can come to the City Hall and pick up a registration form. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aljean. I appreciate the report from the Chamber as well as the renovation of the bathroom and the kitchen. For those that don't know, we did get a grant to improve that. So that money will be coming from a grant that we received in the amount of forty thousand dollars. So it should be wrapping up hopefully soon. That one, the new business, item number one. Fire Department appointments. What it is. Um, those of you who don't know, we are currently, we're currently seeking, uh, individuals to become a member of the Fire Department, for the volunteer Fire Department, a leadership role. The, our chief, uh, our previous chief, Chief Dixon, he served as well for many years, and he stepped out of that role. So with that being said, first, uh, in order to give him honor for what he's done, I think it's appropriate for us to appoint him as Emeritus Fire Chief, Emeritus Volunteer Fire Chief. Emeritus just means he was working in that position before, and he, it's an honorary title that he will forever hold. Um, so therefore, I'd like to first make a motion to add Mr. uh, Chief Dixon as Emeritus Fire Chief, Volunteer Fire Chief for the City of Addisville. Has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Be it areas now, we're moving to a vote. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the chair, aye is ahead. Thank you again, Chief, for your service. Now we have, uh, a position of Fire Chief that's open. Uh, so just to give some of the individuals who are here in the room, uh, understanding what we did. Uh, we didn't take this situation lightly. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we tried to reach out to the best candidates, uh, tried to reach out to all the candidates who were interested. Uh, we had an interview process, uh, with myself, uh, with the council members. Uh, we spoke with volunteer firefighters and also members of the community. Um, some individuals, uh, some individuals submitted resumes, uh, well, all individuals submitted resumes, and the council members had opportunities to review them, uh, at a work session. We had, uh, thorough discussions, uh, about the next steps, uh, and opportunities for individuals to voice their, council members to voice their concerns, opinions, uh, and suggestions. So with that being said, um, I have made a decision as far as how I would like to appoint these positions. Uh, all of these members once, and I do want to add to this, all the members once, they, uh, when they were interviewed, they did say that regardless of who was selected for the position, that they would be a participant, a willing participant, and would not leave the line to the Fire Department. So we hope that they will continue with that because we need each and every person who is willing to serve in that role. With that being said, um, there'll be three positions that we, that I'll be making, uh, asking, or making a motion and presenting, making a motion and presenting. The first position will be, uh, the chief. The second will be deputy chief, and the third will be assistant chief. So there'll be three positions. Chief, deputy chief, and assistant chief. Um, the person who I've been making, uh, and all this is within the same motion. Um, the fire, the person who I'm selecting for Fire Chief is Mr. Terry Jones. Uh, for Fire Chief, for deputy chief, I'm selecting Mr. Alfred Cooper for deputy chief. And for assistant chief, Mr. Vaughn, Maurice Vaughn, for, uh, assistant chief. So with that being said, that is my, I'm, I'm saying it in a formal motion, so I will ask that I get a second. And, and then we're moving, uh, to any brief discussion.
Second motion.
There's been a motion and a second on the floor. Now we have discussion. We're in discussion for the council members. Be it that there is none, we're moving to a vote. All those in favor of the nominations as presented, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposed? I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote. We're gonna start from the right side of the room. We're gonna ask Mr. Wilkins.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so the motion did not pass. It went three and three. We're now moving to item number one, item number two, premium pay. For the uh, COVID nineteen provided funds for the citizens of Addisville, well, not citizens, the citizens of Addisville and the, uh, department, uh, for us to run. Uh, there are strict rules that we have to utilize those funds for, but one of those things we can do is take care of our, uh, is to take care of our, uh, employees. Um, typically, at the end of the year, we like to give, uh, what is called, um, extra pay. Uh, but for the COVID nineteen, uh, they did allow us to give them what's called premium pay. Uh, these individuals, such as the sanitation workers, or, uh, police, uh, people here who worked at the office, they were on duty. They did not shut down. Uh, they had to continue to work each and every day. So with that being said, we will, uh, I ask for a, a motion to approve them get each employee, uh, the City of Addisville, which we have approximately twenty-seven employees, um, and, uh, each, that each employee get a bonus, not a bonus, translate bonus, premium pay, uh, premium pay of one thousand dollars for each, for all employees. And this is a one-time bonus, uh, that will go to them, and it will come directly from the COVID nineteen funds that have already been allocated to the City of Addisville. This has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Who made the motion?
If not, we're moving to a vote. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? In the chair, aye is ahead. The motion carried. Now we're moving to item number two.
Three.
Oh, sorry, three. Recognition of citizens. Uh, we're gonna ask that, uh, Mr. uh, Woods, Ms. Barnes, Mr.
Oliver.
Oliver, and Ms., yeah. Let's all, let you all come forward, please.
Um, as many of you as many of you all, all know, uh, last week was a devastating week for the, um, City, uh, City of Addisville and the fact that we had someone pass away, uh, by way of, of fire. Uh, and in, in light of that information, we had some individuals who put theirself to the side, and they decided to make, um, make things right, uh, and try to do the best they could as regular citizens. Uh, neither one of these gentlemen, um, here who are, are present, and Ms. Barnes is present, for her son, uh, the chief, the chief of police in Carrollton, Mr. Kendra Barnes.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry. Thank you, ma'am. I apologize. Thank you, ma'am. Now you claim, you claim, claim, you been claiming. Uh, Mr. uh, Mr. Barnes, uh, was present on the scene. Uh, the response time for the, uh, for that was two minutes, and for our volunteer Fire Department is less than six minutes. So I think that everybody acted above and beyond what they could do at the time. But right now, I want to specifically recognize these two gentlemen right here who are, uh, citizens. They're not caught up, like, everybody in the community knows them. But when the time came to, uh, to do what they had to do, they did it. So I appreciate it. Your community appreciates it, and we want to make sure that we recognize the things that you have done to make Addisville a little bit better. Even though, uh, it wasn't our kind that we want, you still wanted to do something positive, and we appreciate that. Thank you. This plaque says for both of these gentlemen, as well as Mr. Barnes, uh, we hereby honor Turner P. Oliver Junior in dedication to your community with an assistance due to a house, in a house fire on November the first, two thousand twenty-one. The City of Addisville, thank you. Thank you. Is that same here with you, sir? And same with you. I appreciate you accepting this. This is same thing, and I appreciate you accepting on behalf. They had a murder, they had an emergency, that's why Chief Jones isn't here, because he was on the scene as well, and we, uh, have a plaque for him as well. So we want to just make sure we recognize him. I think it's appropriate for us to get them a hand clap for their appreciation.
That being said, we're moving to a council payable. Council members, you had an opportunity to review the bills as presented. All those, uh, are there any questions about the bill that's presented? Alright, be it that there are none, we're moving to a vote. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the chair, aye is ahead. Motion carries. Now we're moving to Police Department report, Police Department here to report. The street, the street department report. Um, we don't have a report at this time. Uh, we would like to ask that you, uh, keep in mind that on November the twentieth, we will be having a community cleanup thing. Uh, we'll meet here in the City Hall parking lot, and we ask that, uh, please, ma'am, please, sir, come out, and we'll make sure we disperse you to your areas where, uh, where you need to be. Uh, we will have garbage bags on hand. We'll have, um, things that you pick with Chicago Pinterest, that you use to pick things up with. So we'll be doing all those things, um, on November the twentieth, so that way when people come to our town, for the Thanksgiving holidays, they'll be able to see, um, see a, uh, improved, uh, and cleaner town. Uh, Fire Department, there any reports on the Fire Department?
I don't know. Just want to piggyback off what you said. We'd like to thank those gentlemen that put their selves first, um, to help, to help us on that, uh, that house fire. We'd like to thank them.
Thank you, thank you. Also, we want to remind people that, to this is, uh, unfortunately, this is the season that a lot of that type of stuff happens. So we ask that you make sure that you unplug those irons, unplug your, uh, unplug your space heaters, uh, unplug whatever it is that's sucking up juice, that don't need to be sucking up juice, because sometimes those can be contributors to, uh, to house fires. So we just ask that you make sure you do that as well. Uh, we've already had our Chamber of Commerce report. And so now we have a elected official in the field, and I would allow him to, um, go ahead and speak at this time. Do you have the name, uh, board member Spencer?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Coming to speak today, the Mayor, along with his great team here, his council, council team here. I'm asking you all, with the rezoning, what's going on now? I'm asking that you all help me and citizens of Addisville out with, uh, with, with the rezoning. Because a lot of people don't know, we're trying to get out of a high school in our, in our district. We labeled as Addisville High School, but our high school is labeled in Gordo area. And whether y'all know it or not, this, uh, City Hall, what y'all meeting in, belong to Gordo. So with the rezoning going on at this time, I ask you, if you don't mind, just y'all stay on top of it and try to get this in our Addisville area. Sub-10 in one state of that area, city needs its own high school. So Addisville don't have its own high school. It's labeled as Addisville High School, but it's in the Gordo district. So I'm asking you all, will y'all please help me out with this, to try to get our school in our zone? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We, uh, we, we appreciate that. They definitely, uh, if everybody has been paying attention, uh, they rezoned the state of Alabama, so, uh, we have new congressional district. We're still in the same congressional district we've been in. Um, they rezoned the state board districts, and they rezoned the, um, state representatives for the House and for the Senate. So those changed for some individuals, but for the mainly, um, for us, we pretty much have the same representatives that we've had in the past. However, um, they have not redrawn the lines for the county, uh, of Addis, of Pickens, excuse me, rather, uh, Pickens County, I'm sorry, of Pickens County. Uh, and that will be, that is what Mr. Spencer's talking about. They'll be getting that information together. So I ask also the citizens, um, please make sure that you reach out to your, uh, individual county commissioner. Uh, majority of us are under Mr. um, Mr. Ingram, um, so reach out to him. Uh, as well as Mr. the gentleman from Gordo, um, I can't remember his name. But that's the other group. Not by the name, the other, it's another guy.
Mark Gray.
Gray, Mark Gray. Uh, so we ask that you, please reach out to those individuals and let them know how we, how we, uh, are trying to respond. Thank you for their report. We appreciate it. Now we have opportunity for any citizen. If a citizen would like to say something.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
To the Mayor and the Board, for the most of you who don't know me, my name is Tricia DeGraffery. I'm the, um, senior citizen director here in Addisville. I came to the Board to, I got three issues for our center. First, you know, it's COVID season. And, uh, I know I had some people positive in our center. I've been calling and asked someone to come in since the city took over the center now. With my agent, we had someone to come in. But since the city took over, I haven't got no one to sanitize, come in, and do nothing like that. I'm asking, because I have seniors, I'm trying to get my center back open, and they afraid to come back if y'all don't do what y'all, that y'all gonna do. Alright, I got some issue with some electric plugs. It's not working. That's a firehouse with my seniors in the building. I asked about that also. And then we got, since, um, y'all changed a lot, key issue. I stay in Columbus. They say I can see, and I can't come to work. Uh, one of my agents here, Jill Nolan, is the next person to get Keith to open the center to let the seniors come in. I feel like she should have one, because I might, anything can happen overnight. You know, you understand what I'm saying? So I feel like she should have one too, because now it feel like she don't open the center, the seniors can't come in if I'm not there. And they feel like they be left out. And all I ask, I called, I don't know, three or four times. I talked to the secretary of clerk, asked for a community service work to come in, you know, to clean up. When the agent had, we had volunteers to come in and clean up for us on Fridays. But now I don't have anything. I can't do it by myself. My seniors are not able to do that. So if y'all can help me out, I appreciate it, because I want them to feel they left out. That's all I ask, to help us out, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for, thank you for bringing those concerns to the council and the Mayor. Some of those, uh, we just hearing about, some of those are ongoing. Um, but we appreciate you, and we'll make sure that we, uh, we don't know and get those rectified, um, that you brought up. But thank you, thank you, and thank all of you all for coming with. Is anyone else having a, a moment that wants to?
Hi, can you hear me? My name is Sunny Collins, and I'm here with my fellow volunteer, Tricia McBride. A few weeks ago, a group of community, community-minded women requested a parade permit for our third annual witches' ride, and I want to follow up with the council and share the success of that ride. We had thirty-two riders and raised seven hundred and fifty dollars for the Aliceville Public Library's children's program. The children enjoyed wearing their Halloween costumes, and I've got to say, the adults did too. The witches and goblins rode bicycles, tricycles, golf carts, one tandem bike, with a mother and her sweet little girl, and even one stroller with our youngest participant. I gotta get a friend. With her youngest, with the youngest participant being pushed along for fun time of waving and collecting treats along with the rest of our merry riders. The Aliceville Shopper's Guide, the West Alabama Bank, so graciously hosted pit stops for our riders, providing treat bags and water. Along the rides, we had spectators that waved, they laughed, they took pictures, and they cheered us all along. And we truly appreciate that community support. The entry fee was ten dollars for adults and five dollars for children. All children were accompanied by an adult riding with them. We had no problems with traffic. We had one spill. A little goblin fell off his bike. But all is well. Nothing was hurt, but his pride, that was short-lived. Hopped right back on, tough little goblin he was, and finished his ride. This ride is not sponsored by any club or other organization. It is simply a group of civic-minded women that want to raise money for our community and have a little fun at the same time. All donations were greatly appreciated, and that helped make this fundraiser a success. And I thank you, Council, for granting our request for that parade ticket. Onto another holiday. You may have noticed that Santa's Little Elves have been very busy. The pavilion and the gazebo just outside of his City Hall have been made ready for the annual Christmas tree lighting that will follow the Christmas parade. The Elves are a volunteer group consisting of community members and members of the Aliceville gardeners that are excited to prepare our town for that special Christmas magic. Members of the City Street Department helped with the, assisted with setting up wreaths and carolers. Aljean Strickland liaison for the city and the Chamber of Commerce assisted in all aspects of our preparation. Funds from the Chamber of Commerce purchased new green LED lights that you can see on the gazebo wreaths. Our volunteers give generously of their time, their talents, and their money to prepare Aliceville's Christmas tree lighting. So follow Santa to the pavilion after the Christmas parade for the children to visit with Santa, enjoy hot chocolate, lively, beautiful Christmas music, and visit him with friends, neighbors, and seeing our town tree light up. And thank you, and thank you, volunteers. And Aljean has already given you the parade date. The theme is a holly, jolly Christmas, and it will be, um, December the sixth.
Thank you, and thank you for helping the, uh, the Elves, as well as the, uh, gardener that assists to make us, make things happen. Appreciate you.
I wanted to just, um, speak, um, just kind of chime in a little bit with, um, Ms. Felicia. I'm on the half, we have here our executive director, Whitney Jo Thomas, in residence of the building. Um, when the locks was changed, um, we, our director kind, we kind of felt a little difference because you all, we know you owned the building, but we thought that we were the one that was managing the building. And we have did a lot of things inside of the building, including we just did a grant for RCD that proved to put computers, um, printers, and Facebook quarters in their flower center. And we just, we just feeling, I guess, a little odd that, um, things, my director that locks was changed, and he wasn't allowed to keep. You know? And like you said, like Ms. Felicia said, we go in, we was cleaning the building, we was doing all the extra stuff that the building needed.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Council members, do you have anything?
I appreciate all y'all coming out. It really do make me feel good. Y'all, y'all care about the city of Addisville. Appreciate you all. Number two, uh, day is a Green Court birthday. And number three, tomorrow is Veterans Day. So I appreciate all you all, Veterans, already. Thank you.
Yes, um, I would like to piggyback on a couple things. For one of yours, I received, uh, a call from, um, the bus for the, I'm still with the bus here Friday night, um, that, uh, Addisville, uh, stayed and hope got the bus ready. So they called and appreciated what we done, and I'm grateful that Addisville Police Department, uh, it was cold Friday night, y'all. It was cold, but the bus broke down without the game. And at one thirty to two o'clock, we must have, uh, the police department, the police department still running around. There were lights and everything that came down. We had a bus come, seventeen from, almost in hospital. It was a, a spare weight bus, but we stayed with. And he left Addisville staying about two o'clock, Saturday morning, when they be the bus cranked up and leave. But we stayed with, they came back and picked kids up, saw them, that, uh, when left hack, I went to football bus. So the guy that had my car and everything, he, he called and thanked us again, and how much he sent a letter to the city of, of Addisville and the communities, on how grateful that he were on behalf of our community and our citizens that stayed. Like, by getting the names, it's twenty-five peoples out there. What you can do, what you can do, what you can do. Uh, our police department had two vehicles there with lights on, spotlights on. At one thirty in the morning, we had somebody that controlled them. I called the chief at fifteen minutes to, or tell him we're getting ready to leave. Uh, I didn't think he would, I was out. He, he was, what's up, young? He would answer the phone, tell my car. Uh, he was still out with us trying to get the bus going, and, and, uh, it was one of, it was not a one-person effort. It was a team effort, that was all. The state and hope got them going, and they grateful. But in the town, they can say that about our city, and he say, we have not received help in a town like you did in Addisville, uh, last Friday night, you're right. Yeah, you were there. So he just wanted to thank everybody, and I want to say that because if we have not hoped there, they mean like, everybody in Addisville would know what I'm saying.
Good evening. I just want to thank you all for coming out on tonight. And also like to say, to encourage the citizens of Addisville, um, find out who your council man or councilwoman is. A lot of the issues that you spoke about, I didn't know. I, I don't know. I can't speak for the other ones, but I'm speaking for myself. I didn't know, and I know sometimes you probably called to the, um, City Hall. Find out who your council man or councilwoman is in that, in your area, and, you know, talk to them. You know, whatever your concerns are, talk to them, you know, you, you, you put us here. You elected us, you know? So come and, and find who your man, your woman is, and, and talk to them, and, and tell them your concerns, you know? And then, hey, maybe you can double-take it and go together, you know, and, and see, can you get some, some deed? But if, 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 we never know about anything, if you never say anything, or if you go to, uh, Mr. Wouter, you know, and don't say anything to me, you know, about what's going on, then how are we to? you know, about what's going on, then how are we to know? So I encourage each and every one of you to find out what district you're in, who's your councilman, who's your councilwoman, and, um, and, and, and go about it that way. And we just encourage you, Ms., Ms. Felicia, Jill, to, to keep, to keep it, to keep it, and, and, uh, we're gonna be, all of us gonna be kind of checking in too.
Oh, and I forgot, this is a good one. Saturday, November the thirteenth, we are sponsoring a COVID nineteen testing, um, and booster shots. It's gonna be downtown from nine to twelve, U A B will be here, the nurses will be here, um, is, we're, we at the old Shell's gas station over there, but we'll be across the street at the, um, Heart Camera Center. We're going to be wrestling our door prizes, um, for anyone that comes in and get the booster shot. So we hope you all spread the word, come and join us, and, um, get your booster shot, or even go vaccine if you hadn't, um, received them. And that'll be Saturday, um, November the thirteenth from nine to four.
Alright. Be it that there is none, I understand most to adjourn. Move to second, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Alright, thank you guys.